All right, so we've already had a violation of the rules of decorum. I'm going to read this, and you all agreed to this when you signed up. Speakers shall refrain from personal attacks and/or threats directed toward city staff or members of the public. Speakers shall be civil and courteous in their language and presentation. Insults, profanity, use of vulgar language, or gestures, or other inappropriate behavior are not allowed. Comments, questions, or jeering from the audience are not allowed. Speakers shall likewise not address or respond to members of the audience. I am asking everybody, as I did last time, to please be polite, listen to others, no jeering, applauding, yelling in between speakers. I do not want to have to call this meeting, and I'm depending on all of you to ensure that everybody is heard. So please obey the rules of decorum, and we'll go from there. As you know, you each have one minute to speak today because we have 108 people signed up, and I am going to start the meeting with Octavia Rainey.
Excuse me, I have something to say prior to that. One, we, back in the spring, guaranteed three minutes to every -- it was why we moved the separate -- we moved it to a separate day for that reason. So because of that, and because of the work that the community engagement board has done in an effort to emphasize that everyone deserves three minutes to speak, whether or not we have one or 108, I am going to make a motion to reinstate three minutes.
Second. That was seconded by who? I just get done talking about the rules of decorum, and hey, no one will be heard because the meeting will be suspended. Now, please, please, let's show some respect. Thank you. Now who seconded that? I saw two hands go up. Councilmember Patton. Okay? All in favor? Okay, motion fails.
I'd like to make a second motion. Can we move for two minutes?
All in favor? Motion also fails. We will do -- start with Octavia Rainey, please.
Good evening. My name is Octavia Rainey. I would like to say in one minute that I do not support the transit overlay district of New Bern Avenue. I do not support the Bus Rampant Transit. Bus Rampant Transit, black people will not be on that bus, and that's a fact, and that can be proven that black people will not be on that bus. I'm also asking for David Eaton's email. I want the contract for the Bus Rampant Transit -- I mean, for the bus station in 2011, because you had RoboCops at Moore Square in 2011, and I want the present contract. So I'm asking for three things, and I want my three things. That, with them carrying weapons, they are patrolling us just like we are a bunch of slaves sitting up in a plantation. That is nothing but weaponizing, and this city council should not tolerate that at all. So please adhere to my three requests, and I want to know when I can pick up my request from the manager's office.
Thank you. If I could have people stand up, who's next? Fletcher Goodman, Woody Biggs, Matthew Brown, Lorraine Meehan, and Amy Ravitch.
Thank you, members of our city council, for your hard work on behalf of my hometown. Each of you is so much very appreciated. I live at 715 Lakestone Drive, 27609. Our neighborhood is home to as many as 100 very active schoolkids and kindergarteners. Nearby development has turned our quiet street into a cut-through connector. At times, vehicles roar through our locale at speeds that would be welcomed at the Charlotte Motor Speedway. Excessive speeds on a residential street with at least three blind curves and children at play creates a very dangerous situation. Working with our city, neighbors have requested the speed limit on Lakestone Drive be designated and enforced at 25 miles per hour. The sooner the better. Please. Thank you for your help.
Thank you. Can we follow up on that, please, city manager? Thank you. Woody Biggs?
Hi. I've been -- I started coming here last December to talk about Glenwood South's noise and crime issues. I appreciate your efforts. I think we have made some big improvements. And with that, I am going to wish y'all a Merry Christmas, and I won't bother y'all again tonight with that, but I'll be back next month. Thank y'all.
Thank you, Woody. Happy holidays. Matthew Brown?
Promoters of TOD rezoning Z-9222, which upzoned 744 properties in East Raleigh, seem to say that it's okay that hundreds of affordable units will be destroyed because the city will build hundreds of new affordable units. But they are not equal. The people living in these affordable houses, some for decades, love their houses and love their neighborhoods. When their properties get upzoned to five or eight stories, the homeowners will be pushed out because their taxes will go way up, and the renters will be pushed out when their landlords sell to developers. For the city to adopt a rezoning for the specific purpose of pushing people out because they are in the way of development is immoral, and many of these folks still don't know this is going to happen. How you vote on this rezoning will be the principal legacy of this council and of each of you individually. Please consider carefully. Thank you.
Lorraine Meehan?
I am a survivor of the World Trade Center attack. My husband was a federal agent, later died from his injuries while recovering the dead at the First Tower. I have heard here at Moore Square Hamas supporters chanting "Intifada" and "From the River to the Sea," resulting in attacks on me and three other Jews. They rejoiced on October 7th, but now cry uncle, calling for ceasefire, which to some appears well-meaning, but gives the terrorists time to rearm, to escape, and to continue their attacks upon Israel, which they have vowed to do over and over again, no matter their suffering of their own people. This resolution may appear humanitarian, but supports the Hamas terrorist agenda, if past antisemitism in this community will only increase.
Amy Ravitch?
They say the Arab-Israeli conflict is complicated, but it really isn't. Islamic terrorist organizations like Hamas, Palestinian Islamic Jihad, Hezbollah, and others just want to eradicate Israel and get rid of Jews. When Gazans tortured, raped, and burned Jewish children alive, they gleefully celebrate it because they hate Jews. They hate Jews so much that they kill their fellow Gazans who try to flee to safety, hoping they will be fodder for their propaganda against Israel. It's antisemitism on a grand scale. When the terrorists can't finish the job on their own, they use lies and antisemitic propaganda to turn well-meaning Americans, including residents of Raleigh, against Israel. Hamas supporters are ridiculous because they think the Raleigh City Council is not here to address foreign affairs. It's also ridiculous to think that Hamas would honor a ceasefire. They never do. None of this serves the Raleigh community, other than to increase antisemitism here.
I am going to ask once again that you be respectful of the speakers, or I will end this meeting. Next, we have Kathryn Wolfe, Phoebe Wolfe, Josh Ravitch, Omar Nabusi, and Chris Crew.
Kathryn is sick. Kathryn, her daughter is sick.
Kathryn, Phoebe, and Josh are sick.
Kathryn, Phoebe, and Josh are sick. Is that what I heard?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Is Omar here? And then Chris Crew.
In the name of Allah, the most gracious, the most merciful, today I stand before you with a heavy heart, burdened by the painful truth that our city council has sold themselves to money in this world. You have abandoned your morality, leaving your hearts numb and sealed off. We trusted you to be the voice of the people, to protect our interests and uphold our values, but you have forgotten your purpose. Seduced by the allure of personal gain and power, a community suffers as you prioritize the highest bidder over our well-being. In recognizing the interconnectedness of oppressions, we must acknowledge the historical and present-day discrimination faced by Palestinians, the black community, the Jewish community, Native Americans, and marginalized groups. These communities have also endured systemic racism, religious persecution, and the erasure of their cultures and identities. Why haven't we learned our lesson yet? We will not lose hope, for even in the darkest of times, the light of righteousness can pierce through. Believe that the power of the people can triumph over greed and corruption. Our voices will reverberate, shaking the foundations of your misguided choices. Palestine will be free. Don't be on the wrong side when it happens. Ceasefire now!
All right, three strikes and you're out. That's strike number one. I'm going to tell you again. No clapping in between, no harassing the speakers. Please stop.
Chris, before you get started, so sorry to cut you off. Please, please just try to follow what she's saying, because they're really looking for any reason to not have this meeting, as we've seen, and I want everybody's voice in this room to be heard. Everybody. So just try to keep the clapping to a minimum. Clap in your hearts if you have to.
Yep. We want everybody to be heard. We want everybody to have their time. Chris?
Thank you. I had prepared a three-minute statement on preservation as a value, including a sincere compliment regarding recent council success. Instead, I'll bring up the dastardly manner in which public comment has once again been stifled, the third time since March, when you agreed to a predictable schedule offering three minutes. On September 12th, I chided you for voting with the mayor to arbitrarily cut comments to two minutes at a previous meeting. Now, with less than six hours' notice, at 10:38 this morning, the manager's office notified me that you only care about one-third of what your constituents have to say. I've given my prepared comments to the clerk to be entered into the record. Vote against urban renewal 2023. That's Z-9222. Vote against. Elections are coming. The citizens are watching. They will not forget.
Thank you. Next, we have Deborah Friedman, Lisa Huggett, Lulu Tabalha, Yodam Kahana, and Marina Essa.
I am here on Hanukkah advocating for Jewish lives at a city council coerced into making a resolution to indulge Hamas sympathizers. The opposition is advocating for a permanent ceasefire, which translates into Jewish genocide. On Sundays, Face the Nation, Bernie Sanders said, "I don't know how you can have a permanent ceasefire with Hamas, who has said before October 7th and after October 7th that they want to destroy Israel, and they want a permanent war. I don't know how you have a permanent ceasefire with an attitude like that." These activists you see at City Hall offer darkness rather than light to Raleigh. They don't want peace. They don't want coexistence. They don't demand the release of Israeli hostages. They want to obliterate Israel. Their move is a stunning act of--
Ma'am, your time is up. Thank you. Lisa?
'Twas the night before council, and all through the city, affordable units demolished. Oh, what a pity. The ADU pilot awaited funding with CARE in hopes that affordable units soon would be there. The developers nestled all snug in their beds with visions of profits and luxury spreads. Affordable housing, a dream sought in pain, at 30% to 50% AMI, the pleas seemed in vain. Yet new city councils, members with courage aflame, took up the challenge in the city's name. Accountability they sought from developers' domain, funding for units for those with less gain. A concern in their hearts for a city's soul, as development surged, they aimed for control. The missing dental policy in need of reform, yet the mayor held fast, leaving the norm. Sensible revisions, a call to the air to notify neighbors and preserve neighborhood flair. O council members, heed the call, for Raleigh needs housing affordable for all. History and character, don't let them fade in the rush for progress.
Thank you, Lisa, your time is up. Thank you. Lulu Tabalha? Okay, Yodam Kahana?
So hi, guys. My name is Yodam Kahana. I'm a new resident over here on Raleigh. The local Jewish community and I have a significant concern about the resolution for the unconditional ceasefire in Gaza. In the last two months since October 7 massacre, were innocent unarmed women, men, children, and brutally tortured, burned alive, and raped. As a consequence of response of the Israel government, we are hearing the pro-Palestinians' rally. We witnessed and heard in their hate speech and torture under the umbrella of the freedom of speech, such as the colorful jihad, such as the colorful "From the River to the Sea", which is an allegation, me and my people and my community. This is something that risks us, and physical threat to me and my community. I urge you city council to not -- to the issue, to the statement of any foreign affair, and particularly this one. particularly this one.
Thank you. Marina Essa?
My name is Marina Issa, Palestinian-American, speaking to you for the third time, asking you to put humanity first. Your callous neglect during your speeches is infuriating, as you shamelessly silenced council members while proudly endorsing the ongoing genocide and war crimes against Palestinians, including the time, taking the time to add an Israeli flag in a certain someone's Facebook profile picture. The city of Raleigh has full capability of joining the 14 cities who have issued public calls for a ceasefire. You are choosing not to have Raleigh on that list, so what's in it for you? What satisfaction do you receive in allowing millions of people to be beaten, tortured, and displaced trying to find a safe refugee hospital, even though 2.4 million Gazans have been stripped of their basic human rights and bombed into literal oblivion with weapons that have never yet been seen before in war? The fact of the reality is that all of you are, all of you council members are complicit in all of this. Take a stance for humanity. We are the descendants of Palestinians who were expelled, and we will not forget this. Ceasefire now.
Chris Herndon, Benny Koval, Nicole Williams, Sarah Dolly, and Elizabeth Atkinson.
Good afternoon. My name is Chris Herndon with Wake Up Wake County. For 17 years, we have strived to ensure healthy and sustainable communities for all residents of Wake County. As your leadership is bringing bus rapid transit to Raleigh, I encourage you to maximize residents' access to this critical asset by applying a transit overlay district along the new burn corridor, consistent with the city's equitable development around Transit Guidebook. Allowing more families to live near BRT can end cycles of poverty, further reduce urban sprawl, and save taxpayer money by leveraging existing city infrastructure. The status quo of displacement, gentrification, and sprawl is untenable. We need a yes-and approach, yes to TOD, and incentivize affordable housing, and provide funds to keep people in their homes, and help renters purchase their houses, and the list goes on. Our most vulnerable residents are depending on you to make decisions that will allow them to remain in our city. Thank you.
Thank you. Benny Koval?
Shalom, it's Benny again, District D. Pass the ceasefire peace and international law resolution. In 1986, Raleigh passed a divestment resolution condemning apartheid South Africa, and now it is your turn. Commit to no future training exchange programs between the Israeli occupation or any other military and the Raleigh police. Settler colonialism is a genocidal program that no people deserve to be subjected to, and the Zionist colonization of Palestine cannot keep Jews safe. It only protects the interests of Western imperialism. Everything else is a facade. The Raleigh Jewish Federation is lying to you. One of their partner groups, Beth Shalom, has a crisis of membership because they don't have youth participating. Many young Jews don't go to shul because of Zionism. Beth Shalom is in my district, but I travel to Durham from a combe, an anti-Zionist synagogue, with membership of 100 people and more. Whether Jewish communities support this genocide or not shouldn't be relevant to you, but some of you are confused and others proudly align with genocide heirs because you're in the pocket of developers who displaced people here in Raleigh and steal land just like they do in Palestine. And colonizers are too weak to fight a liberation movement head-on, so they do collective punishment.
I'm going to have to ask you to leave if this continues. Nicole Williams, please.
Okay, this is like three minutes long, I think. So the reason I'm here today is I just want to talk about how the homeless are still homeless, and I've had some conversations with some people, and they tell me that money's not the situation, it's more of an issue of the people that are in power, people being in power, have been in charge of situations, that don't have the knowledge and the resources and the ability, and just a whole bunch of confusion. So again, I'm just here tonight to vouch, to ask Raleigh to please, all you people, speak to your representatives, to the city, to the county, to the continuum of care people, to the governance agency, and ask them how we can rectify this, because people are still dying. Homelessness is a situation of life and death, and people are dying on the streets. And there will be a memorial that will be held at the Wilmington Street Men's Shelter on the 21st visit day. And just remember that people over profit power policy and politics. Thank you.
Thank you. Sarah Dolly? Elizabeth Atkinson? Is Elizabeth here? I know there are some people in overflow, so if we could check and see if either of them are here. Thank you, city manager. Okay, next, we have Rebecca Sabatier, Jeanette Totten, Mohammed Abdalami, Richard Johnson, Donna Bailey. And if you could come up? Rebecca Sabatier? Is Rebecca here? We check on that name as well. Jeanette Totten? Is Jeanette here? Is Mohammed here? Richard Johnson?
Recently, many people, including some of you, spoke in defense of a terrorist group. Some of the Palestinian supporters who spoke were gay, trans, Jewish, Christian. How long do you think they'd survive under Hamas? In calling for a ceasefire, no mention was made of the murderers or the hostages, the horrific sexual violence, or the people celebrating those vile acts. We had a ceasefire for a few days, but Hamas's refusal to release more female hostages led to a breakdown, because they don't want those women to speak about the sexual violence they've endured. You know, I'm going to keep going, so you can grunt all you want to. This is not to discount the suffering in Gaza, but let's be clear about who is responsible for that. Hamas. They admit they attacked in a manner designed to draw a heavy Israeli response. They deliberately hide behind women and children in order to generate sympathy, when they are the ones responsible for civilian casualties and destructions. And they have admitted they don't intend to stop until Israel is destroyed. You can do better. The city of Raleigh has nothing to do with American foreign policy, and council should stick to its main mission of trying to keep Raleigh affordable and safe for everyone.
Thank you. Your time is up. Excuse me one second, Donna. I saw some people walk in. I just want to make sure it's not people who signed up before. Sarah Dolly, Elizabeth Atkinson, Rebecca Sabatier, Jeanette Totten, Mohammed. Okay, please go.
Well, I had a, I had things lined up to say. I had a very carefully timed video that I was going to show. I will send, I will send that to you instead. I worked a lot of time to get that to two minutes, but again, I'm going to talk about this outrageous cutting of our time. I'm the only member here of the Community Engagement Board. We spent so much time developing this process, moving it, so this is the only thing you have to do, is listen to people. This is outrageous that you're following her direction. We know she doesn't want to listen to comments. Cory and Jonathan, you both want to be mayor. Right now, you're showing you are nothing but a follower of her destructive policies. If you want support from the people, you better show you want to at least listen to the people. So many people are not even showing up today. What, so what if you were here a little while longer? Big deal. This is much more than just cutting time from three minutes to one minute. This is showing, this is a slap in the face to the Community Engagement Board, all the time they're trying to do to improve community engagement. This goes for you, Stormy, too. I have no expectations of her at the end.
Next, we have... If you think I'm kidding? I'm not. I'm not talking to you. I didn't, I wasn't talking to you. Leroy Mitchner? If you could come up, followed by Eric Solomon, Jackie Field, Maya Ganman, and Lauren Frey.
Last time that I spoke before the city council, you said you were going to get the city manager to contact me, and she refused to do.
Kay?
Okay. Three nights ago, this young guy shot nine times in the police car, and he parked downtown, and he parked on Pettigrew Street, four houses down from me. And I was the only one out at that time. And I'm sure he tried to get out and run, and left his car there. The news people came, and they didn't say anything to me, and all that stuff was caught on the Ring camera with the city planning commission. And when you do, and I had a lot to say, but I'm, I'm timed and limited. Yeah, rezoning, redistricting, gentrification, and gerrymandering is aimed at the Black community, just like the slave plantation, it's modeled after that. And it, look, I agree with the lady about this time. It's just ridiculous, because I had three minutes to go. And then, I have some information that's very viable for the police department about these young men that shot into their car. And I would like to get a chance to-
Okay, thank you. The city manager will follow up with you.
Yeah, that's what you said the last time.
Or the city manager's office. Oh, RPD did follow up, I was just told, so. Rabbi?
Being here today breaks my heart. Where everyone's sympathies lie in the Israel-Hamas war, there is suffering. My synagogue has been terrorized by bomb threats, and after Hamas declared a day of rage against Jews across the world, members of my community entered a state of panic. What can be the role of the city council here? Not to delve into foreign policy via resolutions that are titled ceasefire, but look below, and it's filled with blaming one side over the other. Our council must foremost protect the safety of all its inhabitants, and when there is disagreement, to model civilized discourse that keeps the value of love your neighbor at the fore. The city council as a whole, by entertaining a one-sided resolution, and a few of the city councils in particular by commenting loosely in public, are fanning the flames. The murderer of 11 Jewish people in Pittsburgh was motivated by public figures who incited him to act via social media posts and statements. Our safety is in our hands. I beg you, do not entertain a resolution that will further pit Raleigh citizens one against the other. Thank you.
Jackie Field?
Good afternoon. I'm Jackie Field, the Executive Director for Art Splasure. I am here to invite you all and to let you all know about First Night Raleigh. That is the free event that we offer on Fayetteville Street. It is a way to bring people together around art and celebration, and we welcome you all to come and share with us. Our free event starts at 2:00 PM with a children's celebration. We'll have early fireworks and a people's procession that starts at 6 o'clock, and the main fireworks at midnight. Again, just a wonderful way to bring us all together, even with our differences. I hope, I hope to see you all there.
Thank you. Mayor Chomgaran? Is Maya in? Lauren Frey?
I'm Lauren Frey, a lifelong resident of Raleigh, and I'm proud to be an anti-Zionist Jewish constituent of this city. As a member of the Triangle Chapter of Jewish Voice for Peace, I want to share my gratitude to Councilmember Mary Black, who attended our Hanukkah for ceasefire event this weekend. It means a lot to me that you were there. My Jewish safety is intertwined with safety of Palestinians. I stand in solidarity with the Movement for Palestinian Liberation, and I'm one of many Jews in this movement, as evidenced by the hundreds of thousands of people who are part of Jewish Voice for Peace, the largest progressive Jewish anti-Zionist organization in the world. We are grassroots, multiracial, cross-class, intergenerational movement of US Jews in solidarity with the Palestinian freedom struggle. I also want to share with you today that professional staff at Jewish organizations across the country recently published an open letter demanding President Biden and Congress call for a ceasefire that has more than 800 signatures and counting, which I have also submitted via email. I'm here to demand that each member of city council use their platform to urgently call for a permanent ceasefire. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Calla Wright, Danya Debor, Mindy Brodsky. I have Marina listed here again, but she had spoken earlier. So I'm going to go to Zoe Neber.
Madam Mayor, Calla Wright has withdrawn.
Okay, thank you. Is Danya here?
I prepared a completely different speech today. Our time, of course, was cut short. I'm sure an attempt to silence and oppress us further, so I will keep it simple. Mayor Baldwin, you are a mother, a daughter, you are a dog lover, according to Twitter. These are entities Israel does not have any consideration for. If you were in Gaza and needed to migrate, you would be forced to abandon your dog, because Israel does not discriminate when it comes to their hunting grounds. I never knew genocide would become a controversial topic, but I want you to tell me that you truly believe the cries of torture coming from Palestine are deserved. The support of this genocide is a direct result of people who continuously mislead the public, spread false narratives, and leaders who encourage fascism. Look around, council, you're in the minority. Call for a ceasefire. The people in this room, the diaspora and supporters of Palestine, are the ones who hold the influence over your position. I would like for you to understand that if you don't call for a ceasefire, you can be prepared to be sick of me.
Are you Danya? Thank you. Mindy Brodsky?
Hi, thank you for your time. I'm a trauma and grief therapist. Half of my family live in Israel. To my neighbors here in support of the Palestinian people, my heart is with yours, breaking and desperate for the violence to stop on both sides. The physical and emotional distance between our two conflicted communities make it nearly impossible for either side to hear its counterpart. But please, let's try. The draft resolution has no mention of the Israelis, including babies my baby's age, who have suffered the worst violence, sexual assault, and terror since the Holocaust, and I don't use that term lightly. The draft, as it, as is, breeds feelings of fear and insecurity in our own Raleigh Jewish community. Parents at my child's Jewish preschool are scared, traumatized, and feel terribly isolated. Language matters. It's one thing to oppose or condemn Israeli policies or actions. It's a whole other story for our city council to declare that Israel is engaged in ethnic cleansing and genocide. The resolution as is will not heal the pain and trauma of the conflict and its rippling effects across the globe.
Thank you. Your time is up. Next, we have Zoe Neber?
Good evening, council. I'm dismayed that the body has yet to make a statement in support of a ceasefire. By your inaction, you are not neutral. The mayor has made clear that she supports the genocidal campaign against Palestinian civilians, and while the council sits on their hands, you're failing our community and the basic human rights of all people. As a union member, what I am proud of is the growing voices in the labor movement in our unions to call for a ceasefire and to divest from entities that commit human rights violations. The United Auto Workers, the American Postal Workers Union, and National Nurses United are just a few unions calling for a ceasefire. I want to see my city government do the same, and if not, you can read my shirt, because I won't be voting for any of you that refuse to sign the ceasefire resolution.
Okay, next, we have Ezra Al Said, Alvin Red, Marmah El Bono, Anna Ordabi Ordabadi, and Tim Niles.
My name is Ezra. I'm a local healthcare provider and a mom of two young boys. I am here today to advocate for a ceasefire in Gaza, where 1.1 million children live. This is my cousin Sumaya and her two children, Omar and Khalid. My cousin and her kids left her home in the north part of Gaza and fled to the south after Israel advised them to, aka to the safe zone. On December 4th, my cousin Sumaya and her two children were killed. They had found Sumaya dead while holding her baby in her lap. A big portion of these bombs are being funded by the USA with our tax dollars. As a taxpayer, I helped kill my family. These children, along with 8,000 other children, could have been died, could have been alive if we had a ceasefire. How many more children need to die? Until enough is enough.
Next is Alvin Red. Is Alvin here? Okay, Marmah El Bono? Okay, um, Marmah Al Bono? Anna Ordobadi?
I can't find my notes, and that's okay. So, I'm here as a Christian today, and I'm here to speak to all of you. I want to speak to your hearts, I want to speak to the humanity that was just woken up in that moment. I want to tell you that the argument that there's some neutrality here on this council is false, because we can see on your Facebook page, Mayor Baldwin, that you have advocated and supported Israel, which is fine, people can support who they like. But when it comes to the lives of precious children, as a Christian, I'm going to invoke the message of the Prince of Peace, and what he told us is that all life is precious. When you think about Christmas, I want you to recognize, as a Christian, you're failing your community. There is something that has to be said. I've worked with a lot of pro-Palestinian movements as an activist in this movement for decades, and I have never heard the kind of anger and hate directed at a community that you hear from some of the Zionists today. The lies that we're told about, that they're saying about beheading and raping, even though it's parodied by Biden and other people all over the mass media in the United States, you can dig deeper. So I want you to look into Max Blumenthal, Gabor Maté, Norman Finkelstein, and I want you to include the gospel of the Lord Jesus Christ in your research.
Thank you, your time is up.
Please understand-
Tim Niles?
-that we can be humans, and we can do what's right.
Tim Niles?
In March, you voted to allow three minutes of public comment guaranteed. I know what guaranteed means. There is no disclaimer saying it doesn't apply if people actually sign up to take advantage of the opportunity. The problem is, when you adopted this guarantee, you didn't update the rules of decorum. You need to remove the mayor's discretion to change the time. I want to remind all voters that Mayor Baldwin and councilors Melton, Fort, and Branch voted against their own guarantee. They voted for it before they voted against it. Can you trust them to keep their word when they run for reelection? They've shown you today that you cannot. Thank you.
Next, um, we have Michael Dublin, um, James, um, let me see, James Ba Montevideo, Paul Roger Erlich, Sarah Quadry, Robert Parish, and Nadim Gabriel.
My name is Michael Dublin Jr. I'm a lifelong resident of Raleigh, North Carolina, born and raised, and a father, a husband, a son, a grandfather, and, and a supporter of justice, and as a lifelong Raleigh native, um, you know, I have experienced prejudice, redlining, I've had the, uh, police foot on my neck, um, I've experienced this, and so I know racism when I see it. And I was around when, you know, Raleigh voted for the resolution against apartheid in South Africa, so we know what apartheid looks like when we see it. We know what imperialism looks like when we see it. Uh, we see it in here when people are telling us, we only got one minute, and warning us, and doing all that things, when one side speaks, when the other side speaks, and someone claps, you don't say anything. And so, be fair. I'm a middle school teacher, and I have to be fair. I'm a parent, I be fair. So you be fair with the people here, and I am supporting the resolution, sign it. Raleigh is no, uh, is, is Atlanta better than Raleigh?
Your time is up.
Seattle, they've already signed it, sign the resolution.
Is James Ba here? Paul Roger Erlich?
I'm wearing my Veterans for Peace hat and my Jewish Voice for Peace shirt, and, uh, when my dad was 15, uh, the Vienna Police in 1938 arrested my grandfather, Jakob Erlich, who was one of the first victims of the Nazis. He was a pre-Nachbar Zionist, a cultural Zionist, hoping for the liberation of his people. Think he'd be rolling over in his grave over what this council, its silence against, uh, the, the genocide that seems to be taking place with the support of our tax dollars. Uh, I'm also very offended by the antisemitism in the equation of, uh, criticism of our country's, uh, support for, uh, 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 the slaughter of, 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 of children that is going, going with, with, to equate that with, with antisemitism. That's to say that all Jews think alike. And, and I'm also very offended, and look, look to the-
Thank you.
There's a time when silence is betrayed.
Sarah Quadry? Is Sarah here?
I have female slides. Do they automatically play itself? Which button? There's a keyboard? Oh, okay. Grew up in New York City, read Anne Frank in school, heard Holocaust survivors, never again is happening to Palestine, antisemitism is being weaponized to justify this genocide and silencing any opposition. Grew up around Orthodox, Hasidic Jewish communities in New York who are anti-Zionist, critical viser. Are they antisemitic? These laws are borderlining McCarthyism. Gabor Maté, physician, Holocaust survivor, staunch Palestinian supporter, actively calling for a ceasefire. First Amendment protection to Montgomery bus, bus boycott, Greensboro sitting dismantling segregation, South African apartheid dismantled with boycotts and condemnation that you can do. America labeled Nentzal Mandela terrorists until 2008. Japanese-American internment camps under President Roosevelt were espoused for fetoms, speech, worship, want, fear for Americans. We don't have it here, and we are aiding Israel to take it away from Palestinians. Genocide, not a war, UNICEF, all world organizations are imploring for a ceasefire for humanity, not just Gaza, Palestine, and Lebanon. Silence is complicity.
Robert Parish?
Good afternoon. I come as a client of the Go Raleigh system and representing the disabled community of Raleigh. As a Go Raleigh client, I have heard many stories from taxi drivers that they're hurting. Why? Because they haven't received a rate increase in 17 years. Now, I'm aware that, uh, city employees have received pay raises. Why not do right by the taxi drivers? And I believe that this can be done. 17 years is inconscionable for them to go without a raise. So I call for council today to grant our taxi drivers a pay rate increase.
Nadim Gabriel?
Good evening, esteemed members of the city council. My name is Nadim Jabrile. I stand before you for a second time, shockingly, to bring attention to the genocide and displacement of the Palestinian people at the hands of the Israeli government. As you are aware, the USA was the only country in the Security Council to vote no to a ceasefire and vetoed the whole vote. I would like to urgently call for an immediate ceasefire in Gaza. It's time to stop funding violence and invest in the safety of our own communities. There is a point that's being made here about the ceasefire, and the ceasefire demands for the release of all hostages. So that's just an important thing to put in there. I reject the use of taxpayer dollars to destroy lives, families, and communities. Some excuses for inaction have been given, such as this being polarizing and the city being neutral. There is no neutral stance on genocide. The Raleigh City Council has taken positions on international issues before. Our mayor and governor have also taken positions on this matter, so we are far from neutral at this point. I'm not asking for solidarity with one people over another, but an affirmation of respect and adherence to national and international laws.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have Elise Berg, Reschka, Shane Collins, Josh Bradley, Adonis Nesbit, and Safa Ahmed. Okay, I get, is Elizabeth Redcott here? Okay, Shane Collins? Josh Bradley? Adonis Nesbit? You're Shane?
I'd like to say that, um, of course, the, the three-minute reduction to one minute is just ridiculous. Um, it's just a straight reduction in democracy, but wh- what I was here for originally is to say that this, this system is failing us, um, this capitalist industrial militarization is failing us. Um, it's quite obvious when every country in the world has voted to, for a ceasefire, for Israel to stop indiscriminately bombing the people of Palestine, for them to commit a word that we seem to be using a lot lately, and I, I don't want it to lose its power, but for them to commit genocide, it seems kind of like a no-brainer for us to also say ceasefire, but America is the only country in the world that has said no. No, there won't be, there won't be a ceasefire. They vetoed everyone else, and that, this needs to stop.
Thank you. Did Josh come in yet? Okay. Adonis Nesbit? Safa Ahmed? Okay, next, we have Dana Elertani, Kevin Amidi, Pamela Hinton, and Myra Montague. Could you give your name?
Kevin Amidi. My name is Kevin Amidi. I'm a Congolese Jew who works with troubled youth and the homeless population of both Raleigh and Durham. It's been brought to my attention that hard-earned constituent tax dollars are being funneled into a genocidal regime on stolen land. 67 days later, there isn't enough soap in the world to wash the blood off your hands. 67 days later, well over 23,000 living souls, not numbers, have been erased from existence. The proliferation of ideology that's standing in solidarity with the Palestinians equating to antisemitism is absurd. Another smokescreen that egregiously attempts to further perpetuate the repulsive ideology of imperialism and denounces any sense of accountability. So today, what I'm demanding is a resolution for a permanent ceasefire, to shift this city onto the right side of history, and to end this blatant genocide, because there is no neutrality, and silence is direct complicity. Y'all is always watching.
Okay, is Dana here? Okay, Pamela Hinton? Myra, um, Montague? Is Myra here? Are any of these folks up in, um, one person in overflow? Okay.
I'm Nichel Mohammed.
What, I'm sorry, what's your name again?
Nichel Mohammed. To continue deny the ongoing genocide and the events that have unfolded over the course of the slaughter is a belligerent disregard for the truth. As we continue to fund Israel, America's biggest welfare recipient, we will become equally complicit in the crimes against humanity and will one day fully deserve a seat in The Hague being tried for them. Those who claim to want security for their racist ethno-state will never see peace through the oppression of other people. Jewish Americans all over the US are calling for a ceasefire against Israel's apartheid regime. Even in Israel, citizens are standing up against their fascist government's military policies. As a Palestinian, I'm asking that you hear the voices of those begging for peace on both sides, and not to continue falling into the trap of false sensationalist stories of October 7th, and those that paint everyone asking for peace and coexistence as terrorist sympathizers. Judaism is not Zionism. Do not fall for the war mongers twisting the Jewish religion for selfish gain.
Thank you. Myrna Abbo Hamzi? Hadil Hamud? Khalid Karib? Rania Mazri? And Haley Kinsler?
My name is Myrna, and I can no longer comprehend the level of delusionment and derangement that we are witnessing in this country. I'm confused, are we living in the United States of America or the United States of Israel at this point? Because we have funneled all of our funds to them, and for what reason? To murder children, innocent children? Palestinian children, Syrian children, and Lebanese children are not guinea pigs and test dummies for your weapons of mass destructions. We are not the terrorists, at this point, you are. You are, and all of you who fail to vote for a ceasefire are terrorists, and that will be the legacy that you all will leave behind for your children, your grandchildren, and so on. And how embarrassing will that be? Because that generation will not stand for this, nor will they fall for this, under any circumstance. So that will be the blood that you are carrying on your hands, leaving for your family to clean up the mess of. You should all be ashamed of yourselves. I have watched videos of children with dogs being sicced on them. What does that remind you of, that fail to vote for a ceasefire on the board right now? What does that remind you of? Be for real, ceasefire now!
Hadil Hamud?
Hi, my name is Hadil Hamud, and I'm the Triangle organizer of Muslim Women 4. In the past, the Raleigh City Council has passed a resolution for South Africa apartheid, and in just July of this year, this city council passed a resolution apologizing for the city's racist past. How ironic, how ironic when time again, black thinkers and civil revolutionaries, from Malcolm X to Angela Davis, have said that we are not free until Palestine is free. How ironic when a member, a certain member of this council has changed her Facebook profile to display the Israeli flag, a country whose military trained the very US police that brutalize and terrorize the black community. So I ask you, how many years have to pass before you issue an apology for your treatment of us now, for your treatment of Palestinians, Arabs, and Muslims? We are begging for peace for everyone. We are giving you an opportunity to live up to your so-called commitment to racial justice. We have sent 3,000 letters to you across multiracial, multi-faith, and multi-issue lines. We are the majority, and we are asking for a ceasefire. And if you don't want to listen to the majority, listen to the 14 other cities that have called for a ceasefire. Thank you.
Khalid Karib?
I'm here to speak on behalf of the taxi company, taxi company owners. Yes, the, we, we've been working on the last rate from the 90s, basically, and they jacked it up 17 years ago. And, uh, 17 years ago in Raleigh, rent was about $300 for one bedroom, now it's 1,700, you know? Uh, the insurance for those taxis, we were paying $127 a month, now we're paying $650 a month. Uh, gasoline was 89 cent a gallon back then, now it's $3.50, and it could go up anytime there's a problem in the Middle East. You know, that's gonna double, you know? So therefore, you know, uh, we are, you know, we, we lost a lot of companies, and we lost a lot of drivers due to that, you know, because they just can't keep up. It doesn't make sense, really. The meter starts at 195, so if you're in downtown, uh, you want to go pick up somebody at falls of the news, um, that's gonna take 30 to 45 minutes, and then you're picking them up and taking them across the street.
Thank you.
Sir, I just, I just wanted to- Oh, I'm sorry. I just wanted to follow up and let you know, our staff is working on it. We did bring it up like a couple weeks ago, they're working on it, and we expect that in February, they'll bring us back a proposal for new rates.
Yes, please, you know, because we, you know, we lose too many drivers and too many companies, and that's-
Thank you. We are work- Stay tuned. Well, as we said, we are working on it. Thank you. Rania Mazri?
Yes, I'm here, I had a three-minute presentation, if you could pull it up, please? No, I mean, I'll have to cut it, of course, but it was, uh, there it is. I don't know how to, okay, where's the-
Uh- We know that it's very bleak, it's very dark, uh, there's no way out. If, if there's no water, there is no way out of Gaza, what, what should we do, like, drown, like, commit mass suicide? Is this what Israel wants? And we're not going to do that. And I was-
It was a three-minute presentation that I had prepared, along with the full statement from Dr. Fatle- from Dr. Fatih Erid, who was deliberately assassinated, and I say deliberately assassinated by the Israelis, and I say deliberately because according to Israeli sources, I quote, "Nothing happens by accident. When a three-year-old girl is killed in a home in Gaza, it's because someone in the army decided it wasn't a big deal for her to be killed." We are saying we want the release of the hostages that will only be released with a ceasefire. It's very ironic that when we cry for freedom and for peace, we are accused of hatred. So we ask each one of you to call for a ceasefire. We know you won't vote until January, but each one of you can call for a ceasefire today.
Thank you. Haley, Haley Kinsler.
Haley Kinsler, 47,520 minutes. That's how many minutes fill the 66 days since October 7th that the siege on Gaza has been taking place. 324 minutes, that's how many minutes fill the 5.4 hours that it would have taken for every person who signed up this evening to speak. Let me ask then, what is 324 minutes of your time to the 47,520 that Palestinians have been experiencing the destruction of their homes, places of worship, stores, universities, and other common spaces? I have to repeat, it's hard to see the policing of our communities that takes place even in these chambers. No matter the time that I spend away, every time that I come back to a meeting, I hear the same demands. I hear people saying that you need to stop the overpolicing in our communities, to demand investing in 30% AMI and below housing, and to demand that you simply speak out against injustice. The demands are clear: invest in our communities, divest from oppressive systems, and pass a resolution calling for an immediate ceasefire in Palestine with the last bit of my time. I just want to let y'all know, I know this is incredibly hard. I see you celebrating, though, I see you dancing, I see you taking place in community with each other, and it keeps me grounded in a time that I know is so heavy for each of you. And so, I just want to let you know, I appreciate you, and I have to send the message that I love each of you and all the work that you're doing. Thank you.
You have violated the rules of decorum, and there are penalties for that.
Salam, shalom, hello. My name is Medina, I live in Raleigh, District D. I'm here to urge Raleigh City Council to pass a ceasefire resolution. Comparing who did what to whom and retaliating multifold isn't the answer. One life lost is one too many on both sides. As in Dr. King's quote, darkness cannot drive out darkness, only light can do that. Hate cannot drive out hate, only love can do that. We need ceasefire. I am a bereaved parent, I know too well the pain of child loss. It triggers me to speak here, yet I feel compelled to speak up for those who are forced to be in my shoes. Near extinction of Native Americans was evil. Enslaving African-Americans was evil. Holocaust was evil. And what's happening in Palestine is evil, too. We need to find, we need to stop it. After all, we are all one race, a human race. Thank you.
Thank you. Eugene Myrick, Israel Al Sayed, and Erica Reeve.
Is there another image? Size out?
No.
Okay, well, the image that's there is actually taken from a story that said that the Downtown South project was going to be on hold because interest rates were too high. And I just thought it was interesting that interest rates would be too high for the billionaires, and what about the rest of us? So I guess we have abandoned buildings to look at a lot longer. I hope that the young ladies, the same ones that voted four to three minutes, I wish you all would continue to hold the line throughout the rest of this administration, so that they could stop the gentrification of people and the mistreatment of people in this city. Jonathan, I do thank you for coming to our meeting, but you did say you live in District C, which is probably why you continue to vote with Cory. And I continue to say that Cory is part of the problem in our district, and people say, "Why would a black person do that?" Because we have a saying that all skinfolk ain't kinfolk. Once again, the same ladies that voted for that three minutes, hold the line and continue to vote against these other people, until y'all can get some help.
Israel Al Sayed. She signed up twice, okay. Erica Reeve. Is Erica here? Thank you.
One minute just means...
The microphone.
Okay, one minute means you're going to get more emails from me. Emily sends me emails saying that you've looked at them, I'm hoping you're not making her a liar. So, I also had a lot to say. Where's my time? Okay, so I'm going to start with 1937, and these are the leaders of Israel. "We will expel the Arabs and take their place." 1937, Ben Gurion. "In each attack, a decisive blow should be struck, resulting in destruction of homes and expulsion of population." Benny Gantz, a little more recently, "As we carry out strikes in Gaza, we hope to kill as many civilians as possible." This was not, this is not from October, this is from before. "So that they may leave our God-given lands." "When we have settled the land, all the arrows we'll be able to do about it will be to scurry around like drugged cockroaches in a bottle." Okay, there's a, I'm going to send you an email about Ross Siegel and a couple of other people, about genocide. And I hope you read those.
Thank you. Next we have Brandon Gray, Samira Hadad, Ryan Ali, and Angie Elhouni.
My name is Brandon Gray, and Raleigh deemed South Park a historic district, recognizing its rich history and cultural contributions of black Americans as they have shown nothing but strength and resilience since 1865, following the surrender of Confederate North Carolina, and building a safe black community in a hostile land with systemic oppression. Despite being built on over a century of black labor, historic South Park's average black population has plunged to 66.3% from 2010's 88.5%, according to the Census Bureau, in correlation with the city's increasing gentrification of downtown. Due to the disrespectfully failed motion of increasing time, I can't give you the facts of recent negotiations, as of November 6th, 16th, that will worsen the displacement of South Park and instead have to improvise. I'm forced to shift to a wider focus. Raleigh has planned a $3.8 billion investment for office spaces and residences of retail
My name is Samira, Palestinian-American, and I'm here to address the council's delay on voting on the ceasefire resolution. The delay contrasts public's demand. 68% of Americans, including Jewish and Christian communities, and even some citizens in Israel, are demanding a ceasefire. There are 14 other cities in this nation who took a clear stand against the violence and called for a ceasefire. We're not asking for something that no one has done before, but as citizens of this city, we want to see this council on the right side of history. And we have faith for the Raleigh City Council, who has previously taken positions on other international issues in the past. Today, we demand that you put this resolution on the table to be voted on, and let each Raleigh City Council member make their position in support of humanity public. There's no remaining neutral against a genocide that's funded by our tax money. Silence means support. And for all of those who spoke today, stop using Hamas to justify a genocide.
My name's Rayyan Ali. At our last city council meeting, I emphasized our children. Our children being made amputees before getting the chance to learn how to walk. Our children being made orphans. Our children being the guinea pigs for U.S. untested, U.S.-funded weaponry. I did this to try to pull at your heartstrings, quickly realizing that you don't have any, Mayor Baldwin. I regret not having done my research on you prior to my last speech. With one quick Google search, I found "Mayor Baldwin bullies little girl to tears." You really berated a 10-year-old girl, and then created your own fantasy version of events, quite similar to how the Zionists make theirs after oppressing a people for 80 years. You're an embarrassment. I pray to God that the screams of our murdered children haunt you every waking second, that when you lay your head to rest, the images of our mutilated family members haunt your extraordinarily dense mind.
Thank you. Angie Elhouni.
I'm Angie. Gaza has been suffering for 66 days. More than 20,000 human beings have been brutally murdered. More than half of them have been children. Any person with a heart, any person with empathy, would be able to feel the magnitude of this enormous loss of life. I know a few of you have issued statements that you see us and that you hear us, and I know at least one of you, Mayor Baldwin, that chooses not to see us, not to hear us, and obviously not to have any compassion toward human life, unless those humans look and act like her. Our mayor has been voted as a representative of this city, but publicly chooses to stand on the side of genocide and unlawful treatment of human beings. The people of this city have spoken, and today we come before you for the third time to ask you to do your jobs as representatives of us. We need a ceasefire in Gaza, and we need for the city to officially issue that resolution. We will not quit, we will not tire out, and we will continue, you will continue to see our faces until Palestine is free.
Next we have Liam Bazzell, Nathaniel Dibble, Ron Garcia, and Camila Amkayet.
Dear Mayor, oh, do I need, oh, sorry. Dear Mayor Baldwin, and esteemed members of the Raleigh City Council, I hope y'all are doing well. This is my first time speaking at one of these affairs, so please cut me some slack. My name is Liam Bazzell, and I'm a volunteer for various community aid organizations in and around Moore Square. Collectively, we work to provide much-needed assistance to the large population of impoverished community members in this historic neighborhood. I'm here today to express our concerns, our anxieties, and, to be quite honest with you, our fears over how the redevelopment of this historic neighborhood will affect us. In particular, I am deeply concerned that the redevelopment of Moore Square South will interfere with the regular distribution of food, diapers, toiletries, and other essentials that occurs several times a week at the southwest corner of Person and Martin Street, which lies within the Moore Square South parcel. In conclusion, if raising property values comes at the expense of mothers going without food and their babies without diapers, then the city of Raleigh should reconsider our plans for the redevelopment of the historic neighborhood that is Moore Square. Thank you for your time and patience.
So I want to begin by saying that we need to be standing with Palestinians. They are our brothers and sisters in oppression, they are our brothers and sisters in the fight for liberation, and they need our support. And additionally, a few minutes ago, the UN passed with more than a three-quarters majority vote to support a ceasefire in Gaza. What I came to talk about today, though, was the LGBTQ+ resolution that Councilmember Jones shared with you. Thank you for that. I want to highlight it and its importance in sending a message to the NCGA and their hateful bills that they passed this previous session. However, we cannot just be having words that we need to be sending to the NCGA, we need to have real actions that will support queer Raleighites. I urge you to pay close attention to action items in that resolution and to pass them with the rest of the resolution, in order to support vulnerable people here in Raleigh. The "Don't Say Gay" law that the NCGA passed goes into effect on January 1st. I know this policy takes time, but we need to be passing it as close to that date as possible. I'm here for questions, if you guys have any.
Ron Garcia and Camila Kehd.
Not only are we grieving the loss of nearly 30,000 of our people, with at least half of them being children, but we are also fighting for our rights right here in the United States. The raging violence and hate against Muslims and Arabs across all states in the past two months is horrific. From a six-year-old being stabbed 26 times, to three college students being shot, resulting in one being paralyzed from the chest down. Every single one of you is responsible. You refuse to speak up for us, you refuse to acknowledge our pain, you refuse to believe our suffering, and you are cowards. You, Mayor Baldwin, are a coward, and you have zero compassion. How do you sit in that chair, listening to our cries for help, our cries for justice, and feel absolutely nothing? Instead, you disregard us because we don't look like you. You should be ashamed of yourself.
More than 20,000 Palestinians killed, 70% of them are women and children. 220 school bombs, 70 schools completely destroyed, hospitals raided and bombed, doctors killed, almost 100 journalists killed. The IDF detained every male man and child at a hospital today, including health workers, and destroyed a UN-run school. 132 UN staff members killed, residential homes bombed, they tell people to flee to areas and bomb them. 2 million people starved. What if these were your children? More than 25,000 children have been orphaned. This is our generation's Holocaust. How many more statistics will it take for your hearts to realize that this is an active genocide and apartheid that we are watching in real time? You are refusing to do the bare minimum in passing a resolution. Hence, one can only believe that y'all are pro-genocide. How many times are you going to ignore the needs of the Muslim community here? Do we not matter? You have an overwhelming majority of residents begging for a resolution, yet you are quiet. So can we really say Raleigh is a democracy? This genocide is not a test for the Palestinians, it's a test for us. Remember, there is a higher authority than you. God is watching what you'll do and whether you will stand by or watch the killing.
Next we have Adam Heller.
Mayor Baldwin, fellow members of council, congratulations, you've all been promoted to be working for the State Department. It seems so from this crowd. I am asking you to keep your eye on the ball locally. I work in housing, and we have a housing shortage. We need more housing, there's zoning reform on the table. We have a transportation crisis, oil dependency, part of our problem, isn't it? We have a number of issues right here, and I'm disgraced by Mary Black for bringing up some kind of proposal here, and I live in District A. What a disgrace. This is not a foreign policy body, this is the Raleigh City Council. And Mary, Mayor Baldwin, I thank you for good leadership, you're a good mayor, thank you generally overall. Of course, we have things we could probably find to repair. Now, we're one community, and we have to work together here locally to be friends and neighbors. We're not always going to agree. Yeah, I'm against the apartheid, the apartheid against Jews, the indigenous people of Israel. I knew that would get that kind of response, because the history goes back, doesn't it? Thank you.
Thank you.
So the one-minute time limit and the time change, it's undemocratic and it's anti-worker. I had to come off work early for that. I know many people who can't do that for one pathetic minute, right? I'm a rank-and-file member of the IBW, the International Brotherhood of Electrical Workers, Local 553, and I'm a delegate to the Triangle Labor Council. The Palestinian struggle against genocide is a worker's struggle. Palestinian workers are murdered every day, and the same people making money off our backs make money off this genocide. We have the same oppressors. The United Auto Workers have recognized this, they're divesting from Israel. Dock workers in various countries refuse to load arms destined for the Zionist war machine. Right here, my local, IBW Local 553, one of the largest local unions, voted overwhelmingly to sign on to the labor movement call for a ceasefire. I'll be bringing the resolution before City Council to the next 553 meeting. The labor movement is rising to stand with Palestine. Labor builds this city, the council has an obligation to stand with us. So yes, this is an issue here, it's an issue for workers here, and you should stand up for workers and stand up for opposing genocide across the world.
Frank Healima. Healima, I got, I'm sorry. I will get it, I'm going to write that down again.
I have copies for each council member, city manager, and city attorney. I work today, and it's near impossible to edit three minutes down to one, so I'll do the best I can. Madam Mayor, you've hauled a lot of flak today, but I will compliment you on your Kaffiyah theme jacket. A study, a study was published in September in the prestigious journal JAMA Surgery by Molly Jarman. The study found that in neighborhoods that became gentrified during the study period, that the incidence of gunshot injuries was 62% higher than in non-gentrifying neighborhoods. In...
In neighborhoods that were actively undergoing gentrification, the increase in firearms injuries was a further 26% higher, equalling 88% higher than in non-gentrifying neighborhoods. One of the solutions to the problem proposed by the authors is to support policies to reduce the displacement of longtime residents, which would include affordable housing. Instead, along the New Bern Avenue BRT, our developer-friendly city planners have increased the height threshold for affordable units from three to five stories, which is unaffordable because of the increased cost.
Alexis Threadcraft, Hua Huang, Jessica Navarro Lovigno, and Julie Leek. I'm sorry, what?
I didn't get called on COVID.
Oh, okay, no, I did, I did, but I thought I did. Okay, go Cole. And is Fiona Allen here? You could make your way up. Thank you, Cole.
Cole McMullin, I also had a comment that was planned for three minutes. It was a real banger, so that's a shame. So I'll have to stumble through it, but first, I'd like to express my support for the city of Raleigh to call for a ceasefire in Gaza and for an end to the US federal government's military aid to the Israeli government. The Blue Ridge Corridor Alliance came here and gave a presentation in which we found out that there was, in fact, going to be apartment complexes in the district, meaning those tenants would see an increase in their cost of living. I would like to see those apartment complexes not included in that MSD. Regarding Go Raleigh Fairs, I think anyone making 80%, 80% of AMI or below should not have to pay fares, they should be completely waived. And finally, I'd like to see more limited equity housing cooperatives included in the housing mix during our next Annual Action Housing Plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Fiona Allen? Okay, Alexis Threadcraft, Hua Huang, Jessica Navarro Lovigno, and Jess, Julie Leek. Please come up and give your name if you've been called.
Hi, my name is Jessica Navarro Lovigno. This is the third time that we all come to you, asking for you to do one thing, pass a resolution for a ceasefire. I ask you, why do you not support it? What are you defending? Anti-Semitism? It's true, anti-Semitism is on the rise, but us being here, asking you to stand with us and calling for the genocide to stop, for the apartheid to end, just like you did in South Africa, for the right to Palestinians to live, is not anti-Semitic. The way we talk about anti-Semitism is not to protect Jewish people, it's to protect Israel. How terrifying. A government matters more than people. Might I remind you, we are not our governments. So our government, though, does start here. It starts at the city level, goes to the state level, and goes to the federal level, all right? So I leave you with this poem by Rupi Kar. "It is not my job to obey these governments, without question. Is my moral imperative to do the opposite? We either have to drag them down to moral hell, or they will drag us down there with them, and I'm not going to a place where I no longer am human. I belong in this world. We all belong in this world. West Bank belongs in this world, Gaza belongs in the world, and Palestine belongs in the world."
Thank you. Your time is up. Alexis Threadcraft, Hua Huang, Julie Leek.
Let me begin by saying that I, it was my understanding that this public comment period was moved to the second Tuesday of the month, so that people would get ample three-minute time to speak. So by changing the time to one minute and to 4:00 PM instead of 7:00 PM, you violated your own commitment to the people. Let's start with that. So move on to the brass tacks. I'm also here to just kind of talk about the fact that it's, we're close to the end of the year, and you still haven't voted on the ceasefire resolution. Meanwhile, Mayor Baldwin, you're willing to do the mineral lighting, but I have seen that you have done next to nothing with regard to any sort of celebration or festivity related to the Muslim community here in Raleigh. In fact, you actually planned public hearing about rezoning cases that would impact and gentrify Muslim community during Ramadan, twice. Once with Shaw University, and the other time with the Western Bus Drop Transit. So that, let that be a reflection, that's a reflection of where you stand, and I hope you actually will change, but I don't think you will.
Thank you. Alexis Threadcraft, is Alexis here? Okay, Julie Leek.
My name is Julie Leek. I have passed around a copy of my full statement. It was quite a challenge to reduce it to three minutes, so I can't reduce it to one, but I would like to read the last paragraph. It says, "We know if the Palestinians were white Europeans like the Ukrainians, this would never have been allowed, much less to continue for two months. There will be no healing, forgiveness, or forgetting of this horrible event in our history. The vast majority of people here and around the world are on the side of Palestine, but our country is not. The United States, along with Israel, has blood on its hands. The least we can do here in Raleigh to place us on the side of justice for Palestine when the history is written is to issue a ceasefire resolution."
Next, we have Sophia Raycape, Bob Gary, Danica Lee, Sabrine Mezner, and Rashid Abdallah. Bob Gary? Then Danica Lee, Sabrine Mezner, and Rashid Abdallah.
Good afternoon, happy holidays to everyone here. I came basically to say that Z9222, it's a rezoning case. It's not an ordinary rezoning case where a property owner comes in and asks to be rezoned and offers some conditions to make the rezoning palatable to neighbors. This is the city itself proposing to rezone 744 properties along New Bern Avenue and do it in such a way that developers will be allowed to introduce density in that corridor without offering a single affordable housing unit. This rezoning is a disgrace. City Council needs to vote it down. I have been in favor of BRT since its inception, I am in favor of development along the New Bern Corridor, but not this way. This is the wrong way, and it's the developer's way. Thank you.
Thank you, Danica Lee.
Danica Lee, as we heard, there was a horrific shooting of three Palestinian students in Vermont last month. The three students were shot for no other reason than looking like the people that the United States systematically portrays as, quote, terrorists. The three were walking to dinner when they were all shot. One of the students is reported to never walk again. These are the frankly preventable consequences of letting unchecked propaganda run rampant. The White House, Governor Cooper, and Raleigh government have all participated in spreading this dangerous rhetoric that is continually proven to be based in nothing but lies, AKA the falsified story of beheaded babies. Mayor Baldwin, City Council, how are you going to convince your Raleigh residents that this type of prejudice, violence, and hate crimes will not be tolerated? Because your actions right now are not remotely assuring to anyone. It terrifies and appalls me to say that unless you act soon, I fear Raleigh will be the next city where unchecked racism and propaganda will result in innocent people being targeted, irreparably harmed, and possibly killed. Free Palestine.
Sabrine Mezner and Rashid Abdallah.
Salaam alaikum. My name is Sabrine. It's an honor to be here today, and I am speaking for Palestine and to stand for the injustice for everyone. I would like to say, let me tell you about my people. We are not who you think we are. We have not, we have been made to believe that we are evil and barbaric to prevent you from discovering the truth. Our people are as gentle as the spring breeze, our people are as kind as a mother's tender love, our children are the purest souls you'll ever see, our women are the pillars of our nation, our men are warriors blessed with the powers of ancestors, our trees are ancient, going back thousands of years, our river waters flow like love in our souls. They told you we were evil to prevent you from seeing who we really are. I am speaking today for a resolution for a ceasefire for the Palestinians. We need to spread peace in this world. This world needs help. I want to speak for everyone. Please, we need a resolution. This world needs help, we need love, we need to follow our ancestors, we all belong together, Jews, Christians, Muslims. Back in history, we all loved each other, we had no problems. Please, ceasefire now. Thank you.
Rashid?
My name is Rashid, and I'm a Palestinian-American. First, I'd like to say, I'm heard, I'm sure you heard this before, Mayor, shame on you for taking our voices away. I'm here for two points. The first point is to introduce and support a divestment from sending our tax money to Israel for military aid. Obviously, we heard plenty of voices here, the money is much more needed in North Carolina than killing babies. The second point is a ceasefire in Gaza and West Bank. There is no mention of the West Bank today, and I'm here to mention that. Hamas, as some people say, is a terrorist organization, great, but it's not in the West Bank. There are so many injustices that people face in the West Bank. So we need a ceasefire for all Palestine. Also, I'd like to mention, someone mentioned the word indigenous. I will look up the meaning for you. Originating or occurring naturally in a particular place, that's the first one. The second one, inhabiting or existing in a land from earliest times from before the arrival of colonists.
Thank you. Next, we have Damian Gu, Koda Sashi, Jamal Mohammed, Miranda Kaiser, and Amber Nimmicks.
Hi, my name is Damian Gu. I live in District D. I'm a member of North Carolina Triangle Democratic Socialist of America. Someone tonight quoted Bernie Sanders. Fun fact, I was a 2020 Democratic National Convention delegate, palage to Bernie Sanders. I have crippling social anxiety, especially with public speaking, so I would like to personally thank the four council members, Melton, Branch, Forte, and Baldwin, who voted to restrict my speaking time by 67% from three minutes to one minute. Thank you for violating my American constitutional right to freedom of speech and democracy. I really do appreciate that. I will keep that in my mind every single day until Election Day next year. Please have a H-E-A-R-T and ceasefire now. Thank you.
Shahor, Sashi, I'm sorry for mispronouncing your name, if you could say it, please.
The tide is turning. President Biden said today, Jeirah Siassi.
Could you give your name? Thank you.
The tide is turning. President Biden said today that Israel is losing global support for, and I quote, "It's indiscriminate bombing of Gaza." A discriminate bombing that killed 18,000 people, including 8,000 children, displaced 1.8 million Palestinians within Gaza, and starved half of the population in Gaza. This is not self-defense. This is a license to kill with impunity. This is a war on children. This is massive genocide via wholesale destruction and death, forcible displacements, and massive population transfer, starvation, and infectious disease. It is a blatant aggression whose victims are innocent people that must be protected. Your silence is complicity. Your silence means justifying, in fact, endorsing the maiming, the killing, the starving of thousands and thousands of people.
Okay, thank you.
Ceasefire now.
Next, we have Jamal Mohammed.
Jamal Mohammed, since the last time we were here, the toll in Palestine has more than doubled. There is a genocide happening. Telling people to flee to the south and bombing them on their way is genocide 101. Seeing that you can only pay attention to October 7th means you should try to reflect on your internal racism and neglect for children that aren't white. Indigenous people do not bomb their land, they do not bomb ancient churches, mosques, tree farms, or release toxic chemicals into the air. Colonial settlers do. The amount of violence Israel needs to systematically exterminate the people of Palestine is extremely expensive. We do not have free healthcare, free housing, free college education, yet Israel has all of these? Just last week, firefighters were in here asking for funding, yet we are tailoring our interests of a different country's social and genocidal needs to bomb children, putting American people needs second, which I feel is close to walking a thin line of treason. Students who fought for anti-apartheid say we need to think globally and act locally. And I'm afraid that most of this council would not, would deem Nelson Mandela as a terrorist. Ceasefire now, free Palestine.
Miranda Kaiser.
Hi, my name is Miranda Kaiser. I was the former executive director for Lovens Community Engagement Center, which I inherited from the Reverend Hugh Hollowell. I currently work with a bunch of mutual aid groups, and we provide meals, toiletries, groceries, clothing in front of the Carriage House in Moore Square. And I understand that that area is under redevelopment. What I am asking for is, are we going to be welcome to provide these services? Because we do provide the wraparound services in Raleigh, because we do not have enough services. There's so much going on with the gentrification everyone's talked about, and we have seen a huge increase in families that come and get groceries from us at the Carriage House. If we cannot have the Carriage House in the future, will you make a place for us? And will you hold us in our hearts?
Thank you. Can we follow up on that? Thank you. Amber Nimmicks, is Amber here? Sarah Mahmoud, Carrie Celeste, Wael Mazri, Mubin Quadri, and Akina Tubbs.
In the past month, Israel has bombed Palestine, Lebanon...
Could you state your name, please?
Sarah Mahmoud. In the past month, Israel has bombed Palestine, Lebanon, Egypt, and Syria, all while managing to convince the entire world that they are the victims. I urge the council to not feed into Israeli propaganda. Last time we were here, the death toll was at 13,000. Today, it is over 20,000 and still rising. We have seen children buried under the rubble, maimed and terrified, and we have seen children with their faces burnt off and their limbs ripped off of their bodies. The list goes on, but today, you all decided we only deserve a minute to convince you that Palestinians deserve to live. Israel has targeted refugee camps, hospitals, schools, and places of worship. Innocent Palestinians are dying, and the US is funding their deaths. 95% of those who died in Gaza are civilians, not Hamas. If that's not enough to convince you to reevaluate Israel's strategy, I don't know what will.
Thank you. Thank you. Carrie Celeste?
If you could give the clerk, please.
I'm here to speak on behalf of my friend Mai and tell the story of her parents who were born in Palestine. The man came into the world in 1932 in Yafa, where ancient streets wind through history, kissed by the Mediterranean breeze, and the woman in 1942 in Haifa nestled between the Azur Sea and the majestic Carmel Mountains. Their early years were filled with happiness. Their childhoods were painted with the hues of joy and simplicity under the golden sun, surrounded by olive groves that whispered tales of generations past. Yet the year 1948 brought forth tragedy as violent acts by Jewish groups led to the expulsion of many Palestinians from their terrorist homes. The man and woman sought refuge in Lebanon, leaving behind echoes of their stolen homelands. The Jewish population, diverse in ethnicities, majority from East Europe, stood in contrast to the longstanding history of Arabs in the region, native to the land with roots going back... back to thousands of years. Let's remember the beautiful childhoods of the man and woman, where laughter and innocence prevail. The injustice faced by Palestinians is a painful chapter. Refugees hope to return home soon, only to find their homes taken by settlers. Why can a state declare itself for one religious group and justify actions that hurt those who lost their homes? Let's empathize with the Palestinian story marked by lost resilience and longing for justice.
Thank you. Would you like the photos back at the end?
You guys can keep those.
Okay.
She has her own copies, yeah.
Okay, thank you. Waile Masri?
Good afternoon. My name is Waile Masri. I've been in Raleigh since 1986. I'd like to begin with a statement by Pope Francis, who described what's going on as not a war, but an Israeli terrorism and genocide against the people of Gaza. So there is this fiction of it's Israel-Hamas war. The Pope himself has said, that's not true. It's terrorism and genocide against the people there. With that said, I only have three requests for you. First, please imagine that you have family and friends there. Given that, please make a statement of your own individually in support of ceasefire and humanitarian aid. Third, please support a ceasefire resolution, joining the other 14 cities in the country, including Atlanta, Seattle. Ceasefire now.
Thank you. Mubin Qadri? Is Mubin here?
Your Honor, I'm sorry. She did withdraw.
Okay. Nakina Tubbs? Go ahead.
Hi, my name is Hayden.
No, you got to talk out loud.
Please start the timer.
Please stop the gentrification.
Gentrification.
I am the future.
So we volunteer for mutual aid, along with some of the other volunteers that were in here. So we also would like you all to reconsider not gentrification in downtown Raleigh, so we can continue to also feed the homeless and the indigent, and as he is also a volunteer on the weekends as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Nigma Salem, Samir Chima, Damon Williams, Nadia Ali, and Ronnie Morrison.
You should stand on that word.
Is Nigma here? Nigma left. Okay, Samir Chima?
Are you aware of the vision statement for the city of Raleigh? To pursue world-class quality of life by actively collaborating with our community towards a fulfilling and inspired future for all? Well, your community has spoken, and some of those that spoke earlier do not believe in equality for all. You are enabling the narrative of a false victim. This perpetual silence in the face of repeated human rights violations against Palestinians is disgusting. Men, women, and children are dying in droves. We need to break this chain of silence of our so-called leaders that have been elected by us but no longer are willing to represent us. You represent your wallets and special interests no matter what. The Declaration of Independence stated that life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness has to be protected. Obviously, this does not apply to Palestinians, only to those that line your coffers. Your inaction to call for a ceasefire frankly is disgusting and inhumane.
Damon Williams?
My name is Damon Williams, and as a resident of these stolen indigenous lands, I am urging the Raleigh City Council to call for an immediate ceasefire. Tonight, I'm speaking to you as an anti-Zionist Christian. I'm a member of the Episcopal Church, and the headquarters of my diocese are right here in Raleigh. My bishops have told us to speak up. The presiding bishop of my denomination, Michael Curry, wrote the following. "Staying quiet in this moment would be a stain upon our souls and would deepen our complicity." So I stand with my Jewish, Muslim, and atheist, and all other siblings in decrying the genocide Israel is currently committing against Palestinians. I call for a ceasefire now because I have chosen a Christianity that identifies itself with a Palestinian Jew whose parents were refugees in their own land under an imperial occupation. And while this council is enjoying holidays and mulling over whether you will vote for a ceasefire at some point, please know that Palestinian Christians in Bethlehem and Nazareth have canceled Christmas while their people are being pulled from the rubble of U.S.-supplied Israel bombs. Ceasefire now.
Nadia Ali?
Okay, so my dad was born in 1942 in Elbeira, came here in 1959, was a City of Raleigh employee his entire career, along with his brother. My sister is a chief in the Raleigh Fire Department. She was the City of Raleigh's 2022 Employee of the Year. We are all Palestinian heritage. I've lived here my entire life, never had a reason to leave Raleigh. For 44 years, never had a complaint of my government in Raleigh. And now you are believing lies of people that couldn't even respect us and wait for all of us to speak. You yourself responded to certain people, showing your favoritism. Finally, I also work in Seaboard Station as a hairdresser who gets to talk to clients all day long, and we will make sure people know about you.
Thank you. Ronnie Morrison?
Hi, my name is Ronnie Morrison. I am a big sister to six younger siblings, and I cannot fathom living without any of them. Unfortunately, the loss of family is not unheard of for many Palestinians. Today, there is no safe space in Gaza. More than 8,000 children have been killed and more than 16,000 injured. 16,000. Those children and other precious Palestinians lost were somebody's family, someone's friend, and someone's loved one. I, like the majority of Americans, want a ceasefire. I'm here to call for an immediate ceasefire in Gaza and demand that we stop the funding of violence and invest in the safety of our communities. At least 14 other cities nationwide have issued public calls for a ceasefire, and Raleigh should follow suit immediately and protect the lives of Palestinians and prevent more bloodshed. There is no neutral position regarding genocide, oppression, and injustice. And injustice anywhere is a threat to justice everywhere. Again, a resolution has been submitted. You have the power to help, and I urge you to please not let this injustice continue. I will make it my mission to ensure that those of you that do not support this resolution will not be reelected. Thank you.
Thank you. Laura Abe Awan? Abdallah Khadr, Mohammed Omari, and Fatima Shat? You could give your name, please.
According to UNICEF, over 25,000 children are now orphaned.
Could you please state your name? Could you state your name, please?
Batul. The 25, the death toll has risen to a staggering 20,000 alongside 50,000 injured. The crisis deepens with nearly 1.9 million Gaza residents displaced. These statistics may have no impact to you because it does not affect you directly. So let me put things into perspective for you. Imagine Raleigh with a population of approximately 474,069. The number of displaced Gaza residents is about four times this figure. If combined, the population of the whole triangle would not even come close to half. These are not just numbers. This is the horrific reality for the people of Gaza. Mayor Baldwin, this is a call for your leadership. It's an opportunity to demonstrate that our community values are not confined by borders but our principles we uphold universally. It is hypocritical to want peace here at home while sending 6.8 million of our city's dollars to kill thousands of people abroad. Mayor Baldwin, I'm going to ask one simple question. How do you plan to leverage your position as mayor to advocate for peace and justice, not just within our community but in the broader international context? Call for ceasefire now.
Abdallah Khadr?
Salaam alaikum all. My name is Abdullah Khadr. Three Palestinians were shot in Vermont. One is paralyzed, chest down. A Palestinian child stabbed to death 26 times in the past two months. As a member of the Triangle Imams Council, which called for a permanent ceasefire, we are very concerned about the safety of our community in our mosques and outside due to the Zionist propaganda and rhetoric echoed by many U.S. officials. It's very ridiculous to claim that pro-Palestine protesters are antisemitic, knowing that many of them are Jews, and knowing that we are, as Arabs, are Semite. Our beloved Prophet Muhammad, peace be upon him, taught us 1,400 years ago and showed us how to live with our Jewish brothers and sisters and our Christian brothers and sisters in peace. But Zionists need to learn that type of lesson. Yesterday, millions watched Ala, the little girl, this little girl whose hand was amputated. Her house was targeted in North Gaza. They told her to flee south, and when they went south, they were targeted again. She said her wish is to go outside of Gaza to get an artificial hand. I'm sure you all have goodness in your hearts.
Thank you. Your time is up.
Not another.
Time is up. Mohammed Omari?
Peace be upon you all, Raleigh City Council. To summarize, at this point, you have seen the overwhelming evidence, and you have felt and heard the willpower and resilience from each of our voices calling for justice and peace. Your constituents, we, demand a statement on behalf of the Raleigh City Council calling for, number one, a permanent ceasefire now; number two, an end to the siege on Gaza now; and number three, an end to the illegal settlements in the West Bank now. So before you go to bed tonight and as you're brushing your teeth, I want you to look in the mirror and ask yourself, do I represent the people of Raleigh, or do I represent Israel's I.T.F.?
Fatima Shat?
Hi, I'm Fatima Shat, and every time I stand here in front of you, I have less family members alive, I have less friends alive, and less neighbors alive. Only 15 minutes ago while sitting in this hall, I got a notification that my grandma's brother died. Every single day when I wake up checking my phone, I have an anxiety attack of checking my phone because I know I will get news of people I know that were killed by Israel. Every single second, my phone at this point is just a trauma tool, not a phone. It's either news of people dying, my family telling me they just found a biscuit to eat today, telling me we're using up the furniture in the house to burn it to make food. I don't have my bed stand anymore because my family had to burn it to make food last week. And I talked to my cousin who came to us from the north. She told me while she was fleeing with her family from the north to the south that they made them lay down in rain puddles.
Your time is up. Thank you. The meeting is adjourned.